Please join me for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And with that, we will do a roll call for presence. Counselor Beebe?
Here.
Counselor Hutchison?
Here.
Counselor Youngman?
Here.
Counselor Merritt?
Here.
Counselor Papke?
Here.
And Counselor Rumble? All right, so she's not here yet, but I am expecting her shortly. So we will move on with the additions to the agenda. Mr. Forrester, are there any?
Just a couple of notes, Mayor. One would be that City Council, City Attorney Jared Reed is not with us in person. He is virtually, he's at his manager's office this evening. And also Dale is out on vacation. Larry is out today, and we have Sergeant Peterson with us. So thank you for joining us, James. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Sergeant at Arms Peterson is here with us tonight.
All right. Okay, with that, let's move to the consent agenda. There was a regular meeting, brief and liquor license and liquor produce liquor application. So is, are there any questions or concerns about the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the council, the consent agenda as circulated?
This is Counselor Beebe.
Counselor Beebe, go ahead.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Counselor Beebe. Is that, was that Counselor Youngman?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Again, any questions, concerns before we go for a roll call vote? Hearing none. Counselor Beebe?
Aye.
How do you, Counselor Hutchison?
Aye.
Counselor Youngman?
Aye.
Counselor Merritt?
Aye.
Counselor Papke? You're muted.
That's sorry, my first Zoom meeting. Aye.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rumble, are you present with us? Hearing none, and the, and the mayor votes aye as well. So the consent agenda is approved. Let's move on. Have we had, is Lisa Morgan, are you present online?
Or James.
Or James?
Yes, I am.
Did we get, did we get any written, did we receive any written comments for visitors?
No, we did not.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on, pass that to council business. And under that, we have Vicki Ryan with us from the Crete County Health Department to give an update and report. So Vicki, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Thanks so much for letting me update you all. We have had an uptick in our cases, as many of you have recognized mainly through the state website and through our media. We have a cumulative total of cases in Crete County now stands at 111. Each week, we calculate how many new cases we have in a week, and that is, right now, we stand at 82 active cases, 27 of those recovered, and our two deaths. We recently had a second death. This week alone, we're up to eight cases already. So the state calculates the reporting week from Sunday through Saturday. So we watch that each day and accrue those numbers through the week. Last week, we had 22 cases. The week before, we had 13. We are monitoring roughly 57 to 58 individuals who are contact cases of the individuals who tested positive. The health department monitors each close contact daily, as well as the positive and presumptive cases daily, to make sure that none of the contact cases are displaying any symptoms. And if they do, then we take measures to get them tested so that we can make sure that they get all the supports that they need as well. We have three current outbreaks. One at a senior living apartment complex, one at a regular complex, and a combined outbreak between two local businesses, mainly because the spouse of the individual who tested positive first worked someplace else, and now we have an outbreak at both of those workplaces. A couple of the things that we continue to try to remind our community of is that we are, we are seeing a strong showing of what we call COVID fatigue, and individuals are starting to relax in our community, and we're starting to see that through the increase in our cases. This virus is by no means over, and we are still dealing with a lot of it in our community. It's finally reached Crete County, which is sad. We have a third individual who is in the hospital at this point that we're hoping does start to recover, because she's not doing well at this point. We have four individuals in the hospital from Crete County. Everyone who tests positive, who is hospitalized, goes to Bend, and they are kept in Bend until they are released back to their respective counties that they live in. I'll stop there for questions before I move on.
Any council members have questions?
One of the things that we were talking about before the meeting actually started was the percentage of age groups of where we're seeing our positive cases. And interestingly enough, we are seeing the majority of our cases between the ages of 30 and 50, which is about 45% of our community. Very few in the younger age groups, 0 to 19. And then not as many as we would expect in the senior age groups in our community. So a lot of this is those individuals who are active in the community. They get out and they socialize, and they socialize at home, or they work. So that's where we're seeing the spread. We have not identified any community spread in Crete County, and the community spread is determined by if I tested positive and they couldn't determine where I got it, where I was exposed, that would be a community spread. Maybe I went to Ray's and I stood next to somebody who was positive, but it couldn't be identified. We've not seen any cases of community spread at all. All of the cases that we've had are identifiable, and they're, they've reported back to knowing who they were exposed to and who they were around and the contacts that they've had. So we've been able to follow that very closely. We have approximately nine health department staff working on the case investigations for all of the cases that we're dealing with now, and we'll continue to have those individuals on standby as we ramp up and slow down again, which we're hoping that we do. Today, we only had two new cases, so that was really good news for us based on what we've seen in the last couple of weeks. Couple of things I want to also remind this council of, the city of Prineville, Crete County in general, and all of our citizens, is that the health department has protective equipment, personal protective equipment, PPE, that we are handing out to our local businesses. We're handing it out to our community members, to our city and county departments. All you have to do is call us or come by and ask for it. We have face shields, face masks, hand sanitizer. For the city departments and the county departments, we have the no-touch thermometers. It's important to keep track. You don't have to keep a log of the temperatures of each of your staff members, but to just have them take their temperature when they arrive at work each day, so that if they are running a fever, then you can, you can send them home and tell you it's determined, you know, what illness they are dealing with. We are in the process of planning a drive-through community-wide flu clinic, and we're going to partner with Massak Medical in St. Charles, and we're going to include a testing clinic as well. So if someone wants to drive through and get their flu shot, and they decide that they want to be tested, they can advance in the line and get tested for COVID at the same time. There's a lot of hype around, why do we want to keep testing? Because that just makes our numbers go up. The reason we want to keep testing is so that we can isolate these individuals who are testing positive, and we can continue to contain this virus in our community. If people are out there asymptomatic, and they're socializing, and they're going to the store, and they're going to, you know, baseball games or whatever, people are working out again, they're spreading the virus, and we won't know unless we actually have that testing availability. And we will have that on Saturday, November 14th. It looks like the date that is firming up for us to have that clinic, and it is a drive-through. I'll start advertising it here by the end of next week. It'll be at the fairgrounds. We'll have it advertised on the reader boards. There's no criteria. It's open to the entire public. And we'll, we'll continue to test individuals who want to be tested until we run out of tests. And we have plenty of flu vaccine to go around as well. So if you know of individuals, or if you haven't gotten your flu shot yet, this is a way to come through, experience our drive-through. It's a way that we're continuing to condition our community so that when they do develop a vaccine, and if the potential comes up that we have to do mass vaccination, then we have that mindset already in play of driving through and getting your vaccine. Back in June of last year, we did an exercise of a drive-through, kind of a make-believe drive-through vaccination clinic. And then with the food drive, that was a drive-through, and people came through and collected their food. So we're continuing to expand on that philosophy of the drive-through setup, because that's the best way that we can minimize the exposure to our staff and continue to support the maximum number of community members in one setting. Any questions?
That's impressive. That's very good. Are there any questions, and staff as well, besides the council? Does anyone have questions at all?
I do. This is Patricia Youngman, and I was wondering, at your flu shot clinic, are you going to have a high dose for the seniors available?
That, I'm not sure what doses we'll have. We're still waiting to get a lot of our stock from the state. So I can find out and let you know, Patricia.
Well, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Vicki, this is Steve Forrester. Thanks so much for doing this throughout this whole issue, this pandemic. We really appreciate our partnership with you and Mary Ellen, your team at Crete County Health. But having said that, what can you tell us about the progress on vaccine coming our way? You know, when? What are you hearing there? Update on the vaccines, please.
We're hearing the same thing that other people are hearing. It could be by next week. It could be by the end of next month. We want to make sure that the vaccine is safe before we will endorse it and deliver it to our community. And until that happens, it's really hard to determine when we're going to see it. There are several large companies working on the vaccines, and they're keeping their progress kind of close, held close, and not releasing any specific dates. And I know that's because it's such a rapid response to developing this vaccine that they don't want to release something that's not safe. There's some preliminary reports coming out of Asia right now that the early vaccine that they had administered was not as effective as they had hoped it would be. So I think our companies are taking a better look at it.
Thank you. Thank you. Tell me about the cost of the flu vaccine for people that come through the drive-through.
If you have private insurance, we'll bill your insurance. Otherwise, it's free.
Thank you very much for providing that.
We got a grant from the state, and that's where we're getting our vaccine from, is through this grant. And it covered all of the equipment that we need to set up our clinic. I got a grant and got the drive-through tent, and so we have been working diligently on getting everything that we need to set up to support our, our community as best we can throughout the rest of this COVID pandemic.
Thank you for stepping up to the plate and pursuing that on our behalf. Are there other questions from, from staff or council?
Dr. Kwon, do you have anything relates to the school with, with your connection to the school district, Eric?
Oh, I would, yeah, I'm not going to bite on that. I'm not the expert at all. So I appreciate all of Vicki's information, and I got my flu shot.
Good.
All right.
Well, and I can tell you that the school metrics is changing. The state is working with Department of Ed and talking. They're in talks now about loosening up on the requirements for the metrics. Don't know how that's going to play out. It should have, we should have an answer to that by the end of this week. So it is kind of up in the air whether or not our schools would have to reverse and go back to distance learning at this point in time. If that happens, they'll have to start transitioning here shortly. But that's why OHA and ODE is working diligently to figure it out. So we're hoping that we can at least stay open at the hybrid level that we're doing 4 through 12, because we've not seen any active cases in the schools. So there, I know we work very closely with them, and I know they're working very hard at making everything safe, because we're supplying them with whatever they need that they can't get on their own.
James, James Peterson, what about law enforcement? What are you guys, what are you guys hearing? And anything you guys need that we could be asking Vicki for?
Right now, our supplies are good, and we are keeping an influx of, you know, PPE as we need, and aren't having any issues with supply at all. But if it, if we do run into that speed bump, we might visit with Vicki about, you know, if we need masks or whatever. But at this point, we're, we're doing good.
Good. Absolutely. Give me a call if anybody needs any. I've got an ample supply of, of all of the PPE that is needed in our community, and I'm working with the state now. They have a $10 million grant that they just got that they are pushing out PPE to all of the local businesses. And so they're working through us to do that as well. So we're going to get those items that we have had a hard time getting, such as gloves and isolation gowns and a few other items. But as far as the disposable K and 95s, we have a healthy supply of those, and we also have the cloth masks that we got through the state as well.
Now, what this tells me is that the health department, through the health department, the schools, the community, all of the things are set up for us to be successful. And it's now up to the individual members of the community to take responsibility. And we can get through this and minimize the impact to the community, to the businesses, et cetera, just moving forward and everybody being, you know, taking on responsibility. And that's, that's up to us, so.
Second back. I think just in closing, I'd like to also add that we're starting to work with some of our local organizations in their safety plans for like their fundraising auctions and things. So they're contacting us and asking us what they need to do to make sure that everything is, is compliant with the regulations for one, but that everything is where it needs to be to keep everybody as safe as they can. So that's, that's a positive turn for us in our community, that those individuals are calling us and asking.
If I may on that, as events come in, most of them come through me, and I actually tell them to let you guys know of your plan, because you're up on the most current restrictions and regulations. So I always refer them to you guys as experts. So when they call for whatever event, whether it's Harvest Festival or whatever they're doing, I always say, well, check with, with the health department first before you get cracking on that, so.
We appreciate that. That makes our job easier, or at least we know where to, where to look when we start getting cases popping.
All right.
It sounds like you folks are doing a terrific job, Vicki. Thank you very much for all, all that you're doing here. You and your department are doing for the community. So thank you.
It's our pleasure. Thank you.
Any last words from anyone before we move on? All right, thank you, Vicki. And let's move on to staff reports and requests. Mr. Forrester?
Thank you, Mayor. We'll start tonight with Meadow Lake's, a little update on the new irrigation system. We're about one-third of the way complete. Zach has reported that six holes out of 12 are completed, or six out of 18, with 12 more to go. So that's great. And the other thing, I think it's really good news for Meadow Lake's is golf play continues to be very strong with some very, very good numbers, as you know, reported the last several months. And according to Zach, October will also be a very strong October for the, the golf play at Meadow Lake. So good news for that, that department. Thank you, Zach, and thank you to the team members out there. On the finance side, Director Liz Shutey and I had our X interview with, with our auditors that we do every year. This was a virtual audit, which is a little bit unusual, and doesn't seem to make a lot of sense from a, from a practicality standpoint, but they got the job done. I know there is a lot of information being passed back and forth between their office and this office. And as expected, there were no issues other than a few recommendations that we struggle with because of our small size with some separation and some chain of custody things that we continue to work on. But very, very good report from our auditors. And Liz, I know you're on the line, or Lori, do you want to comment anymore about our X interview with Kenny from the audit company?
I think you covered it, Steve. Thank you.
Okay, great. And then finally, Liz and her team received the GFOA Award for Excellent Financial Reporting. This is a very difficult award that Liz and her team have worked very hard. This is very impressive to continue to get this in consecutive years. And please congratulate Liz and her team in finance for their hard work and the quality of financial reporting that this city has accomplished, again, consecutive years in a row. So thank you, Liz and team.
Yeah, this is, this is their fourth in a row.
Yep.
Congratulations, Liz and crew.
Yep. I can tell you that sometimes it's a little bit painful reading some of the reviewers. They're pretty brutal. So it does give us opportunity to improve every year, and I know that we've obviously been able to do that. So the other big news today, and it just happened today. If you, some of you on council remember our agreement with Pacific Crest Homes and the Iron Horse Lodge Senior Housing Project up on, on the Iron Horse property. A gentleman by the name of Rob Roy and one of his compadres, Remo Wilson, came to the city council on several occasions, and we put together that program that resulted in the build-out and placement of all the folks that live up in that assisted senior living amenity that's fantastic for our community. There has been some HUD funding that went unused in the Bend Redmond market, and it was recommended to Pacific Crest as an opportunity for funding senior assisted operations in Central Oregon. And we raised our hand, and it looks as though we're going to get a, a significant monthly revenue stream that could last up to 20 years. And it would mean that 15 to 16 tenants, current tenants, and then future tenants, could participate in an assistance program that would limit their rent to 30% of their income, again, for a 20-year funding window. So this is a wonderful opportunity to assist those in need of our seniors for their housing. And we're going to continue to press for this. We don't know all the details yet. We should have them in the next couple of weeks. Liz, I'll need your help with that. I don't believe, based on what I learned today, that there's any covenants that we need to be concerned about from what I've been told so far. But I'd like to loop you in on that. This is something that I think it's just a filling out the application, and it would start in May of 2021. So we'll bring that back through council, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we can get that kicked off. Very good news for our community. I also wanted to update the council and those listening tonight on our professional training and Jedi work that we've been working on since January of 2020. And our team has completed our latest session with our coaches from CrestCom, Manny and Kale. Last week, we covered conflict resolution. We continue to work with our advisory committee. They participated in that session, and we will be coordinating with them to set our training priorities going forward. And City Attorney Jared Reed helps facilitate that. Thank you, Jared. Also, CrestCom, our, our coaches will be providing the council next, November 10th, next meeting, with a summary of the 2020 trainings that have been concluded so far, and then our proposal for our go-forward trainings through the remainder of this budget cycle, which ends June 30th of 2021. So we'll have some updates on that front this next meeting. Also, from our utility department, we had roughly 300 customers that had their water meters read estimated in September due to an error in the billing process. This resulted in an artificially low bill for most of these customers. And the October bills that went out last week have actual meter reads for the customers who were estimated, and that has resulted in higher bill than from the previous month, even though in a lot of cases, the demand or usage for some of those customers has actually gone down. So this is just an adjustment, hopefully just a one-month adjustment. And the finance department has sent out letters to the customers that are affected by this issue. So again, our staff wanted to make sure that council, you're aware that we did have a billing error. We corrected that error, and there'll be some adjustments in this October bill. So if you have any questions, don't hesitate to call me, or Liz, or Lori, or anybody here at City Hall, and we'll get, we'll get the answers for you as soon as we possibly can. And then finally tonight, I'd like to ask Street Lieutenant Scott Smith for a very interesting and positive update on a very important city amenity that I think we're all going to be very proud of. Go ahead, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Forrester. So after approximately two years, or maybe, maybe two and a half, we're finally moving forward with the ODOT Rails to Trails project. This is converting the old railroad track into a multi-use path. The engineers estimate, this is an ODOT project, and they hired the consultant, the engineering firm, to put this together. Their estimate was $464,000. Knife River up Central Oregon was a low bid at $300,311. So that's very positive. They're currently working to get the contract signed between ODOT and Knife River, hoping to have a pre-construction meeting late this week, and possibly starting the project next week if the weather cooperates. This project will build a 10-foot wide paved path with two-foot gravel shoulders from Juniper Street to Combs Flat. They will be putting in a new pedestrian crossing at the intersection of Northwest Third and Spruce or Mason Drive with a refuge island in the middle of Third Street. There'll also be pedestrian push-button lighting there, and similar to what we put in on Lynn Boulevard for the high school. With the pricing coming in low, we are currently working on adding some electrical conduit to the project to allow for later path lighting and security cameras. Also working on adding back some fencing in the area of Stafford Logging. Our crews are currently piping the Ryegrass Canal from Juniper Street to Northwest Seventh and from Northeast Court to Northeast Tenth. This is being accomplished with a Bureau of Reclamation grant. Taylor Northwest is currently replacing our storm drain from Northeast Dunham to behind Wagner's IGA. And once these two projects are complete, we will work at extending the Rails to Trails project, paving from Juniper Street to North Main. So it's been a long time coming, but we are, we are moving forward. So wanted to make everybody aware of that, that that'll be a nice addition to, to our community. Any questions?
Scott, I have one. Is there any possibility?
Scott, I have one. Is there any possibility that you can have a map of that? Some sort of an overlay of where, where all that trail is going that we could see, could, could be put up on our website so that we could refer to that and look at it to the detail?
Yes, we can do that and also have Lisa post that on our Facebook site too.
That would be helpful. I'd like to see that.
Okay.
Other questions? Scott, that's exciting. Thank you for the information.
You're welcome.
All right. Are there any questions, other questions of Mr. Forrester? All right. Well, are there any committee reports from the council?
Hey Mayor, this is Counselor Beebe. I don't have a report tonight, but I do have a little bit of an update. Crooked River Watershed Council. I see a lot of emails going back and forth. So I, hopefully I can get an update from them on what they've been doing through the whole COVID process fairly soon and get that back to you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other reports?
Well, we had a, we had a chili cook-off a weekend before last. And it was, it was down at Juniper Park and I got the pleasure of being one of the judges. Fortunately, I wasn't the only judge. There were, I think, seven of us primarily from the police department and they're much better judges than I am. But it was, it was a good event. It was well attended, attended. And for me, it was very difficult because they were all good, all good offerings for the, for the cook-off. So we had a good time and a good use of the park facility. So, and Officer Peterson, I believe you were one of the judges there too. So you want to jump in with that?
Yeah, it was, it was a fun event. And I, I think they started out with, they only wanted like four people, but then they had like nine, I think nine chilis to test. So we had to be, really do a lot of sorting and deciding, but it, it was good. It was really good. It was a fun time.
Yeah, it's, you know, in this COVID period, it's nice to have some sort of a positive break in the environment. And, and I was pleased that the vast majority of people were masked up and they were very careful about, about exposures, that sort of thing. So it was, it was an event that could be held in the, during the COVID period and with, with minimal risk to the community. So it was, it was a good event. The only other report I have is that the, the Community Renewable Energy Association Board that I serve on did in fact hire a replacement for the retiring CEO of the organization and, and expecting to have a greater participation with the Association of Oregon Counties and the League of Oregon Cities with that, with that group. So that's all the committee reporting that I have.
Again, any questions or comments or any, any other concerns or thoughts about the community that this is an opportunity to bring up since we have a fairly short agenda tonight?
Mr. Mayor, this is Scott. James Peterson, jump in anytime, but we'll have, we'll have it on our Facebook sites. But this Saturday, starting at noon until 6:00 PM, we're going to have North Main Street closed from Third Street to Fifth Street and Fourth Street closed from Beaver to Belknap to accommodate the Chamber-sponsored Candy Crawl. This was a request by the Chamber to, to try to make that a little bit safer for the, for the young kids. So anything to add to that, Sergeant Peterson?
Yes. You know, it's really tough being in the positions where, you know, you're, how do you, are you, are you the enforcer? Or, you know, are you going to kibosh somebody's plans for a fun event? But in the end, you know, providing a safe area, because kids have been cooped up for so long. If they're going to get out there and be running around town, making it as safe as possible is, is the number one goal. And hopefully they, you know, practice distance, wear their mask. But if, if we can do anything to, you know, make it a safe venue for them, you know, that's what it's really all about. Just as safe as possible.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up to our attention. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? We'll move on to ordinances of which there are none. And so let's move down to resolutions. Resolution number 1462, authorizing to efficiently minimize and mitigate the effects of COVID-19. And for that, Jared Reed, would you join in on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, this is the resolution before council that provides the government of Prineville the resources available to meet the needs of the pandemic. We review this every month and it is time to do that once again. In fact, Governor Brown today issued Executive Order 259, which extended the state emergency to January 2nd, 2020. State of Oregon reviews its declaration every 60 days now. We, at the beginning of this pandemic, decided to review it every 30 days and we're keeping with that precedent set.
Well, I hope she made it to 2021 instead of 2020 because that's past, but yeah.
You're right. It's 2021.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Jared regarding the resolution number 1462? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve resolution number 1462?
This is Counselor Hutchinson. I'll make a motion to approve resolution 1462, the authorization to efficiently minimize or mitigate the effects of COVID-19.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there a second?
This is Counselor Beebe. I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor. All right. We have a motion with a second to approve resolution number 1462, a resolution providing the city of Prineville the authorization to efficiently minimize and mitigate the effects of COVID-19 pandemic. Any questions or concerns before we go to a roll call vote? Hearing none, Counselor Beebe?
Aye.
How do you speak? Counselor Hutchinson?
Aye.
Counselor Youngman?
Aye.
Counselor Merritt?
Aye.
Counselor Tapke?
Aye.
And Counselor Rumble, are you with us? Still not present. And the mayor votes aye as well. So we have the unanimous approval of those present. And with that, that's the last item on our agenda. And so I would entertain a motion to adjourn unless there is anything else. Mr. Forrester, do you have anything else to bring up? I do not. Mr. Reed, do you have anything else to bring up?
Do not. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
This is Patricia Youngman. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there a second?
This is Counselor Hutchinson. I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm just going to call all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any objections? Say nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you.